Select Board Meeting of December 7th. We are a little bit late today. We were in executive session and we had a big vote that we had taken. It took a little longer than we expected. I will start with reading a script for select board meetings. This is Select Board Chair Tom Wacusa. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here. I can hear you.
Okay. Steve Marantz is here.
Here.
Okay. Richard Foster. Okay. Mark Gold.
Here.
Okay. And we have staff Lynn Simons.
Present.
Okay. Deb House.
Here.
Alba Sturzic.
Here.
And then we have some anticipated speakers. Chief Dearborn.
Here.
Hey Principal Assessor Jessica Gurara.
Here.
Great. And Town Moderator Rebecca Townsend.
Here.
And DPW Director Mario Maza. Not yet. He'll be in later, I guess. And the Assistant Director for Water and Race Barrier Operations Pete Thurber.
Here.
Thank you. And is Richard Foster joined us? Um, I guess.
Yes, Tom.
Oh, you have. Okay, great. Thank you. Glad you're here. Okay, so this open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of the emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference views as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For resident comments, after the announcements of the COVID-19 update and general comments, I will afford public comments as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all the public commentators, I will call on each name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know it otherwise. We are now turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide further comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a call with other members, please do so through the chair and taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule call vote. All right, so we move to the agenda and the first item on the agenda will be an update on COVID-19. Chief Dearborn.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for that opportunity to provide this update. I'll reference, I'll start off by referencing the December 3rd weekly COVID report for MassDPH. Our average 14-day case count was 40 cases. Our average daily incident rate was 18.5. That was an improvement over the last two previous weeks. And we actually dropped lower in that category. Our positive test cases over the 14-day average was 43 and our percent positivity was 1.81%. The previous two weeks, we were 2.34 and 2.19, so we improved there.
Hey, John.
Yeah, someone, yeah. Someone needs to move.
Mr. Stringy.
Uh, Chad.
Hey, Chief John. I actually have a fire on my cock. Can you blow it out for me?
Okay, someone is in the meeting.
We've been hacked.
Mr. Eggheads Anonymous, meeting group recovery for Mass.
Can you, all right, they're gone now. All right, I'll get back to it. I'll try. So that, well, we're really watching these numbers because we were concerned about the initial surge after the Thanksgiving. Right before Thanksgiving, we saw a significant surge in testing, which we actually performed pretty well in as a community. We continue to monitor the numbers. As you know, school went back in session. They've gone hybrid for the week after Thanksgiving to give us a chance to look at the numbers. The numbers seem to be performing fairly well. They went back today. We did see a little bit of a surge from over the weekend. We picked up 12 new cases today, which is probably an all-time, well, in the second surge, an all-time one-day high. So we are cautiously concerned, I would say. We want to see how the numbers play out. We do typically see higher numbers on Mondays after the weekend because not all the testing sites report all their data over the weekends. We still have seen no evidence of in-school spread, although we have multiple cases associated with the schools. And when I say associated with the schools, it's close contact tracing. Somebody actually has been in contact with somebody who's tested positive or tested positive themselves, so we have to do the circles around them for containment strategy. We have only a handful of cases in elderly care, congregate care, but we are monitoring that very closely daily. That was, you know, that was one of our big issues back in the spring. What we're seeing spread mainly is this is really community spread. We're seeing a lot of families, multiple family members impacted where one gets it and it runs through the household. And we believe that most of the cases are large gatherings where folks are not with people that they're with all the time, they're not wearing masks. That seems to be fairly consistent cause of the cases that we're seeing. But if I could really push a point tonight is that everybody needs to take the gathering restrictions seriously. If you're going to gathers with people that are not your immediate family that you live with, you need to wear a mask. That is a strategy that works, it's proven to be effective. We employ that anywhere that you go that people are wearing masks. We don't see outbreaks or large numbers of people that are getting sick, whether it be the fire station, police station, town buildings, into a restaurant and other types of gatherings. And people need to remember that your actions can affect many, many people. So when you become infected, you start a circle that goes out around you. All the people you've been in contact with impacts their, basically their ability to live a normal life, so. That's all I have. I'll certainly take any questions.
Well, thank you. Yes, we've all heard a lot, but there could be some questions. Any questions for Mark Strange?
No questions. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Steve Marantz?
No questions.
Steve, Richard Foster?
None.
And Mark Gold?
No questions.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And so the next thing is announcements. We do have announcement that the Police Department is participating in a stuff cruiser this year. New unwrapped toys for children ages newborn to 12-year-olds will be collected to benefit Toys for Tots. Please see the date of December 12.
Tom, I'm just, I'm gonna mute everyone for a second and then, Tom, if you can unmute, I'll ask you to unmute. There's a lot of feed, background feed getting picked up.
Oh, from, okay. Yeah, I can hear that.
Yeah.
What was going on with that? So I'll continue the announcements then?
Yep.
Okay, so it is a collection of Toys for Tots and the dates, December 12th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. the Long Meadow Police Department. Rain, snow, or shine, this event will be compliant with all COVID-19 regulations. We ask you to please wear a mask and follow the social distancing guidelines while waiting to donate. Questions? And Deb, or I'm sorry, and do we have any other announcements?
One more. The Long Meadow Coalition for Racial Justice is holding an open listening session on Thursday night, December 10. And there's information on joining that listening session or participating on the longmeadow.org homepage.
Okay, great. Yes, so anyone who can make that, do you have a time on the session?
7:00 p.m. to 8:30 and it's being conducted via Zoom.
7:00 to 8:30. And so if they went to the town website, they will get the Zoom connection for that. And hopefully people will do that, except for the person who was making our Zoom meeting a bit annoying. So next we would have resident comments. I don't know if, if you, did anyone talk to you about wanting to make a comment?
No, if someone would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand or you can submit something to the chat just so we know you would like to speak and I can unmute you.
Right. Unfortunately, they would have to look at the rest of the chat comments, which are pretty rude.
Tom, we have one resident here.
Okay. So why don't we have them just introduce yourself and give us your address?
Larry Rubin, AD King Philip. I just wanted to pipe in, there's been a lot of talk on social media and town blogs or whatever about what's going on at the tennis courts. I know that, I'm pretty sure it's a cell tower, but, and we all approved that over a year ago, but maybe the town manager could just refresh everybody memory on what's going up and who's putting it up and so on and so forth. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Larry. Thank you. We don't always respond, but maybe in the town manager's report, they can fit something like that in. If it's current work. Any other resident comments? All right. So next we have interviews for the Board of Health and the Cable Advisory Committee. And so let's pull up this list here. And we will start, is Kimberly Berman available? She may be muted.
Yes. Hi, Kim Berman here.
Yes, I can.
Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, could you give us your, your, your address and then some comments about why you'd like to be on the Board of Health?
Yes, hi. Yeah, so I, we actually just moved to Long Meadow last year. We're at 69 Canterbury Lane. We have two kids in elementary school at Wolf Swamp and I teach biology at Westfield State University. I've been there for, that's my fifth year already. And I guess my reason is, you know, since all this started and being a biologist, being a microbiologist, I've been watching it very closely, obviously, and I want to contribute. And I feel like this would help, this would be a way for me to contribute to this conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Not, not at this time. I do have some Board of Health questions, but that might be more appropriate later since this is a pretty big group. I just had a couple of questions in terms of, obviously, I know from the website what the role of the Board of Health is. I had a little bit more specific questions, but that can maybe wait till later or in the email.
Okay. Could you tell us a little bit about your experiences with boards?
Zero, actually. I don't have any experience working on boards, but as my role in the Biology Department at Westfield State, I'm on a number of committees. I actually run a marketing committee for the Biology Department and Outreach Committee. So I have lots of experience working on committees, working on groups. You know, we're very goal-oriented, obviously, organizing meetings and, but in terms of, I've never served on any board so far.
All right. Well, I think committees might count, actually. Do we have any questions from members of the Select Board?
Not, not at this time.
I mean from the members that might be on the board. If any board members have questions for you. Yes, Mark Gold.
Kim, thanks for applying. My only question is, are you familiar with what are the responsibilities of the Board of Health are? Because I believe there's a, some component of education from the state.
Yeah, so I, I saw on the website, there's some very general, you know, roles of the, of the, you know, Board of Health. And obviously, as an, you know, an educator, as an instructor, I see my role is trying to educate the community and trying to, especially, you know, I think especially when the vaccine starts rolling out sometime for the general public next year, I really want to be a part of that conversation. I think that's really important. So I, you know, addressing the health concerns of the public and educating the public is, I feel like, is a very big role for me.
Okay. Any other questions for a candidate? Okay. Well, thank you, Kimberly, for introducing yourself and we'll, you know, we'll get back to you as we make a decision probably at the next Select Board meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Michelle Keen-Moore. Are you here? No, Michelle. How about Gregory Valancia?
Hi. No, I am here. I was just trying to get unmuted.
Okay, Michelle. Please, tell us where you live and what your interest is in being on the Health Board.
Sure. So I live at 116 Brooks Road. We've been here for about 18 years. Sure. So, um, I live at one sixteen Brooks Road. We've been here for about eighteen years. And I'm very interested in serving on the Board of Health. Um, my background is in immunology infectious disease. I have my doctorate from Johns Hopkins School of Public Health. I have, uh, a lot of, um, background in, in the current pandemic situation. I also teach. I have taught at, uh, Western New England University in their biology department for the past nine years. I also see, um, an important part being on the Board of Health as an educational piece. And hopefully we'll be able to have, um, a part in being able to help people understand, um, the importance of participating in the vaccination program as it gets ruled out. Uh, I did speak with one of the Board of Health members in terms of the role of the Board of Health and, and what, and how it has served our town. And I feel like I have a fairly good understanding of that. And I think that is definitely a way that I could contribute and I would really like to be able to do that for our town.
All right, Michelle. Uh, thank you. It sounds like you have, uh, some great experience. Any members of the select board have any questions? Comments? All right. So, um, we have, it looks like we have three openings. And, um, so we will, you know, get back to you. We'll make a decision our next meeting in two weeks. All right?
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too.
And, uh, Gregory Valancia?
Hi, I'm Greg Blania. I live at, um, sixty-seven Ely Road. Uh, we've lived in Long Meadow for about thirteen years. And, uh, I have been a cardiologist at Bay State Medical Center for the last eleven years. Um, I started there as, uh, I'm an assistant professor at UMass, um, carrying that title with the Bay State. I, I do heart failure and transplant cardiology at Bay State, so I have an immunology background and kind of a diverse background for cardiology, which is very applicable, uh, also, you know, outside of COVID, um, you know, cardiovascular disease is a really important part of, of living in Long Meadow and elsewhere. And, um, I have kind of a unique opportunity of seeing disease a lot. And so I understand the importance of prevention of disease. And, um, also, uh, you know, I have a lot of experience sitting on boards at Bay State. I both sit on a care, a committee at Bay Care, um, the Clinical Integration Committee. And also, uh, a policy and risk committee on one of the Bay State subboards of Bay State Health. So, um, you know, I think I have a unique background and I've lived here for quite a long time, kind of made this our home from Pennsylvania. And, um, we have children here, uh, that are in schools in Long Meadow. And I think this is kind of an important time to volunteer my experience and hopefully I can help with the community.
Okay, Greg. Thank you. Um, I appreciate your, what you have to offer for the town. Uh, is, any questions for members of the board? Greg? Okay. I, I would not say that's a bad sign. Okay. Again, thank you for, uh, joining us tonight. We'll let you know in, uh, in a couple of meetings, a couple of weeks. All right?
Sure. Thank you. Have a good night.
And next we have another member from the, uh, Board of Health, Christine Beaumont. Are you here?
Hi, yes.
Oh, great. Uh, can you just give us your, your address and tell, give us a little bit of idea why you would like to be on the board?
Sure. Um, I live at four eighty-two Laurel Street. I've lived in Long Meadow for forty years. I have two children who are in college that I've raised in Long Meadow. I am a registered nurse. Uh, my master's degree is in the concentration of public health nursing. And I have an interest in serving my community, um, in the disease prevention and health promotion aspect. I have, uh, in my current role as Director of Health Services at West Springfield Public Schools. I am, uh, also managing the contact tracing and case investigation for the town of West Springfield. And I am up to date on all of the latest information from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. I've participated in multiple weekly webinars since March and staying up to date on anything COVID related. I think this is, uh, an opportunity to serve my community at a time when my, my skills are relevant, uh, particularly at this moment. I've also served, I'm currently serving on a statewide anti-vaping curriculum committee. Um, I have served on Governor Deval Patrick's School Safety and Security Task Force Advisory Board. And I am currently the Program Director of the West Springfield Care Coalition, which is a youth substance abuse prevention coalition. And I advise that Board of Directors as well.
Well, that's great. That's quite an impressive, uh, activities. And, um, yeah, I think that part of it is, you know, with COVID, folks are sort of looking at these openings and saying, you know, maybe this is the time to step forward. And we appreciate you stepping forward. Uh, any questions from other members of the select board? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Christine, as we say, there's three openings and we'll, we'll let you know in a couple of weeks. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for joining us. Um, and next would be, uh, Thomas Mira. He's available?
Good evening. Thank, thank you for having me. I, uh, live at forty-seven, uh, Oakwood Drive, uh, lifelong resident of Long Meadow. I have a bachelor's degree in public health sciences. I currently work in, uh, state government at the Department of Transitional Assistance. I have experience working in, uh, state and local government, big and small business. Uh, and I'm very interested, uh, at this time in, in offering, uh, to help my community in any way that I can. Uh, I'm also particularly interested in making sure that the, the work that the board is doing is being seen by as many people as possible and utilizing, uh, you know, different digital platforms to, to make sure that, um, that the message is being heard.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas. Um, and, um, so any, any questions from members of the board? Okay. So the, um, you know, I guess the main question for me is, um, have you ever thought of being on the board before? And is, why are you choosing now to try to be on the board?
Well, I think that now is, uh, the time when the need has been greater than ever before. Um, it's something that I've been interested in, but I would say that, um, some of the events, uh, in the past year or two have really, uh, elevated the need for, for people to help in any way that they can. And if there's some way that I can bring my, uh, experience to bear, then it would be my pleasure to do so.
All right. Well, great. Thank you. And, uh, you know, we, you know, we'll let you know in, in a couple of weeks' time. So, uh, thank you for applying.
Thank you. Take care.
And now the Cable Advisory Committee, we have, uh, one, uh, your associate term, uh, is Graham Jesmer available?
I am, yes.
Hi, Graham. Can you just give us your, your address and, uh, tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this cable advisory?
Sure, happy to. So, uh, I'm at ninety-seven Homestead Boulevard. Uh, we've been in Long Meadow for just about a year. Uh, moved out here for, uh, for a new job. And prior to that, uh, I served as, uh, counsel for the New York State Public Service Commission, uh, regulating among other things, the, the cable TV, excuse me, cable TV providers, um, in, in New York State. So I'm very familiar with cable franchising and, and how that works as well as, uh, the needs of, of towns and how the relationship between those companies and, and the towns and the state government all work.
All right. Well, great. Yeah, we always, it's always great to have someone with experience, uh, applying for something like this. Do we have any questions from members of the board? For Graham?
This is Marco.
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, Graham, thanks for applying. I was just wondering if, if you were aware of, if you spoke to anybody on the current uh, cable advisory board, kind of get a sense of where they are and any, you know, having moved from New York, what the constraints are and, you know, Long Meadows, Massachusetts kind of constrained on what our cable advisory committee can do. I was wondering if we're up to date on any of that stuff.
I, I haven't had a chance to speak with anyone on the board, uh, at present, no. Um, you know, I, I, I have had a chance to at least dig around a little bit and, and take a brief look at the current franchise and see what's there. Um, but, you know, understanding, right, the, uh, the, the limitations i- is, it's always a balance. It, it, it's how far can the town go while the state will still, uh, will still accept, uh, any agreements?
Thank you. Okay. Uh, any further questions? All right, hearing none. Um, we'll move on, but, uh, thank you, Graham, for applying. And, uh, we'll let you know. Actually, we, we're late for our, uh, tax classification hearing. But we've been late for everything else today, so, uh, I guess we'll start moving into that. And, um, so I guess I'll turn it over to Paul Pasterzic, who usually handles this. Les Lim, if you have some introductory comments that you'd like to make?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. And, uh, Paul, uh, can you start with this process? Tell us what we should be thinking about. We received all materials. And hopefully you've had a chance to review them. I actually think the Board of Assessors and the Principal Assessor Jessica Gier are gonna do the presentation. Oh, great.
Okay, give me just a second to unmute all those people. Um, I wanna make sure I've got the right ones I'm unmuting.
I think minimally, um, I have two members of the Board of Assessors. Jessica, are you gonna need to share your screen?
Uh, yes, I am.
The hard point, okay. So then if you can allow her to do that.
Jessica, is it giving you accent? Can you hit share screen at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, and you do, you do need to vote to open the hearing.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, so I'll call for a motion to open the, uh, the, uh, hearing for the, uh, tax classification. What did I say?
I move we open the tax classification hearing, Rev. twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Is he a second on that?
Everybody else is muted.
Well, I'll second it. Um, and if we can unmute folks, and Deb, can you take a roll call vote?
One second. I gotta go through the list here.
Right. And for those of you who are watching from home, if it seems a little disorganized, part of it is that we were hacked earlier in this meeting. And so we're being very cautious to make sure something like that doesn't happen again.
Okay, I'm here, Tom.
Okay, Deb, we'll do a roll call vote on the motion.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve? Steve Morantz? Marco?
Yes.
Richard? Richard? Okay, I'm missing two. All right, go, go back to Steve. He should be all set now. And then go back to Richard after. Okay, Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Richard? Richard Foster?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we can now move on with the presentation.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes, Jessica. Looks great.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so the purpose of this presentation is to show, um, how we arrived at the tax levy under Proposition Two and a Half and show how the tax rate is calculated. Um, and discuss how the tax levy can be redistributed by having different tax rates and satisfy the state requirement of a hearing on the classification as set forth by the Department of Revenue. Um, so you should have received the report that shows the changes in value and, um, the impact of a split tax rate prior to this meeting. Um, last year, or I'm sorry, the last certification was completed in fiscal two thousand nineteen. Um, certification years require a more extensive audit and approval process, um, by the Department of Revenue. Um, the interim year is the same process of discovering new growth and, um, we do that by inspecting properties based on building permits. Um, this year we were unable to complete our measure and list. We have a five-year plan, um, to complete our measure and list. Um, and we were unable to do precinct C due to COVID. Um, but hopefully we will pick that up in the spring and capture new growth in, in the process. Um, we then list and estimate by market value of all real and personal property, both taxable and exempt. Uh, we are on a mass appraisal system and in mass appraisal, the cost model is the basis for establishing a value for all property types. If sufficient sales exist, then the cost model is tested, uh, by comparing the value estimate of the model to sales and then, uh, calibrated for accuracy and reliability. Um, each class of property is required by the Department of Revenue to be within a certain ratio. And in an interim year, a complete analysis of rents, vacancies, expense ratios and cap rates are not conducted on commercial properties. And this is just basically due, um, to the time and expense associated with the process. Um, as always, the, the Department of Revenue must review and approve the sales values and growth. And they do that prior to, uh, the classification hearing. Um, so the total new growth for this year is, uh, ten million, seven hundred four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, which equates to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars in taxes. As I mentioned before, we were unable to complete the measure and list in precinct C this year. Um, but we're still on track to finish that, uh, in, in twenty-two. Um, the new growth found on this slide is from the inspection of building permits from July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty. And the new growth plays into the, um, tax levy calculation, which we will look at in a few slides. So we are looking at the total percent changes in each class category. Um, personal property, as you can see, showed a five point five percent increase this year. And that is due to the five oh four utility valuations. Um, and those numbers are provided to us by the utility companies. Um, you can see residential had a one point four percent increase. Commercial had a point seven percent. Um, and um, so one of the ways communities raise money, um, is through property taxes. Um, and it's known as the tax levy. So this is the calculation for the tax levy. Um, it's a pro, it, the tax levy is, um, approximately seventy percent of all revenue. Um, and you can see the levy for fiscal twenty-one is fifty-six million, four hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred forty-three. Um, and the actual levy you see at the bottom there is used in the tax rate calculation. So this is the, the tax rate calculation that, um, we use. It's required by the Department of Revenue. So if we know the total value of taxable, taxable property, which is V, um, and the amount of the revenue or income that must be raised and that, that's the tax levy. Then we can calculate the tax rate to generate the property tax bills. Um, tax rates must annually be approved by the Department of Revenue Division of Local Services. You can see the proposed tax rate for this year is twenty-four seventy-four. Um, last year was twenty-four twenty-one, so we're looking at a difference of fifty-three cents. Last year was twenty-four twenty-one, so we're looking at a difference of fifty-three cents or two point two percent. This slide here shows the impact of split rate of tax rate and tax levy. And then I see a typo there. Prior to the approval of the tax rate, each community must decide if all classes of property will share equally in raising taxes according to their assessed value or if one class will pay a higher rate, which is a so-called split rate, and consequently pay a greater share of the levy. So the Select Board can vote to either adopt a single rate for all property classes or a split tax rate by shifting anywhere from one to fifty percent. With each one percent shift, there's about, you can see, a two percent decrease in the rate for residential and a twenty-five cent increase in the rate for CIP, which is Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property Taxes. So this is just basically to demonstrate the impact the shift would have on the Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property share of the levy. With a one percent increase, you can see the CIP share would increase thirty-four thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars. And that means the residential share would decrease that same amount. A single tax rate would allow for all property owners to pay their share of the tax levy based on the value of their property. And splitting the rate does not change the amount of property tax revenue that can be collected. It just redistributes the burden between the classes of property. So with a one percent shift, the average residential tax rate will be eight dollars lower, and the average commercial tax bill will be seven, seven and a, seven hundred eleven dollars higher. The average assessed industrial bill will be a hundred and twelve dollars higher. And personal property bill, the average personal property bill will be a hundred and ninety-two dollars higher. So CIP, again, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, combined would see a three hundred and thirty-four dollar increase on the average assessed bill. So in closing, it's important to note that the primary makeup of Long Meadow is about ninety-four percent residential. So a slight reduction to residential would mean a larger increase in the burden on Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property. And again, shifting that burden does not change the amount that needs to be raised. And usually, you see typical communities that do split the tax rate have at least a twenty percent commercial makeup, which we don't have here in Long Meadow. And that's all I had, Tom.
All right.
You're welcome.
Paul, do you want to follow up on this at all?
No, I think Jessica did a pretty good job. It does show that our tax rate will go up to twenty-four seventy-four. I think what I'd add to that, I believe it's about two dollars and thirty-eight cents of that is directly related. Two dollars and thirty-eight cents is directly related to the debt exclusion. Even as a, a twenty-two dollars and thirty-six amount, that would be attributable to the Prop Two and a Half levy ceiling, which would be twenty-five dollars. Again, I think also moving forward, the market values and the sales, the sales in calendar two thousand and twenty have been very strong. And it is believed that we will see a higher percent increase in our valuation in FY twenty-two when those will take effect. So, you know, things, if as far as the valuations are concerned, are very strong still in the town of Long Meadow. We do have, we do obviously have a high tax rate, again, mainly attributable to the debt exclusions more than anything else.
Okay, great, thank you. I think we have some questions. Mark Gold, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I have a handful of questions. Just want to start with, I just got an email, I don't know if, I hope you got my email. I sent you over the weekend about a question I was going to ask because it was a little more technical, but I'll repeat it for other people. But in essence, I'm just trying to balance the the increase that in percentages because the document says that our increase, our levy, actual levy went up three point six percent, but values went up two point four percent. And and the difference of was one point four percent greater taxes. And that made sense to me, but then it said later on that that there was actually seven two percent increase in the average tax bill. And so the question is, how how are average tax bills going up three point seven two percent if there was really only a, you know, a two point four percent increase in values and a one point yeah, two point two percent increase in value and and one point four percent increase in our our taxes?
So Mark, when when we say the average tax bill, we are just, it's it's not three point seven two percent across the board. It's just that on that one property. So anything that falls below that average amount will have a lower increase, and anything higher will have a higher increase. And basically, we just put that in there to kind of paint a picture to the board of what this will look like to the taxpayer, what this increase will look like. And it's not, again, it's not across the board. What goes into the increase in in the the bills, and you had mentioned something about the the tax rate being a part of that. That's actually, again, that's part of this equation that we have. So the tax rate doesn't go into, that has nothing to do with the valuation, if that makes, does that make sense?
I I guess, I I, you know, the, what I'm just trying to get to was the the total levy is going up three point six percent. But home values are up one point two percent. So it seemed to me that we're better off letting people know that it's a two point four percent in increase in the tax rate.
I see.
Which is what we have, as opposed to saying a, you know, a three point seven two percent increase in the average tax bill. It may be semantics, but the the difference concerned me. And frankly, if we're working with averages, the average house ought to be the same as the average amount as opposed to lower valued houses and higher valued houses. But I guess that leads to my second question, which is, you know, the valuation of properties with, you know, just so, I'm sure you may, you've heard this, but the people who haven't, I've been on the board now for ten or eleven years, and for eleven years, I voted for split tax rate. And my pro- purpose or process behind doing that is that I believe that our commercial properties have been undervalued. They, you know, and so I I'd like you just to speak a little bit about how val- how property values are established, and also just speak to the fact that in the last year, based on the PowerPoint we just saw, residential properties went up one point four percent in average value, but commercial properties only went up after that, zero point seven percent in value, which continues the ten-year one that I've seen of commercial value, property values, not keeping up with residential values, when in fact, I just can't see why that's happening. So I'd like to understand that as well.
So what contributes to the increase in in residential properties is every year, we look at the sales, and we make adjustments on our mass appraisal system based on those sales. So there could be an increase in certain style homes, like a ranch style home, for instance, and we could see a decrease in a split level home. That is why you're seeing an increase in in residential is because we are making adjustments every year, we're looking at those sales. With commercial properties, we we look at their their income and expense reports that they submit every year. But for personal property, and I'm sorry, for commercial property. And we are only required by the state to get more, do more of an analysis with commercial properties once every five years during our reval years. And the reason for that is because it's very costly to the town to do this on an annual basis, and it's not required to do on an annual basis. So I, we we met almost a year ago, and, you know, Ken Rogers from KRT Appraisal, I think he gave you kind of an overview on on what goes into commercial properties when when they look at the increase for that. And there's, I mean, there's really not a lot of sales with commercial properties, especially in Long Meadows. So that's another reason why you're not seeing the increase in the interim years.
Mark, the other thing that I would add too is that the increase in pers- in the personal property is part of that commercial rate, where those valuations increased five point five percent. I also looked at the increase from this year or FY twenty-one comparable to FY twenty with regard to the actual levy amount that is presented in those categories. The residential levy went up roughly three point five nine percent. However, the Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property category, those which would be in the commercial rate, went up four point five percent. So they are picking up a little bit more of the property taxation that Long Meadow assesses, and at least for FY twenty-one, I did not go back to look at prior years.
Well, how much of that is the new properties on Dwight Road? I mean, I I understood that, but I think unlike properties, we've seen that commercial just doesn't go up, is, doesn't reflect increases. And and it just bothers me that the the trend, and I've done it for the ten years I've been on the board, you know, residential values have gone up a good steady, one and a half to two percent every year. And commercial properties are less than one percent a year, and I just don't buy it. But I I understand, and Jessica, I understand the issue is that there are no commercial sales in Long Meadow. But that shouldn't exempt them from from a more stringent look at what what the value of that property is because I, you know, that that's been my argument. Not that I want to put a burden on them, I just believe our commercial properties are undervalued. I believed it for ten years, and I continue to believe.
Tom, we can't hear you.
Thank you. I was wondering if there was any questions from other members of the Select Board. Steve Morantz? Any questions on this? Okay, how about Mark Strange? Okay, well, Richard Foster?
None, Tom.
Thank you, you didn't text me. All right, this, you know, we were facing this decision, it's a pretty regular one we have to make between having a a single rate or having a split tax. I mean, I personally think, given the hardships that our local businesses have faced, that this would be the wrong time to to, you know, increase their taxes for our businesses. So I guess the next thing would be to take a motion, have a motion for if we would be taking a a single rate.
Tom, do you have to offer, is this a public hearing as well?
Oh, right, yes, I think we can hear from other folks. Is there someone else who wanted to speak to this issue?
So if they could just send me a message in the chat if they want to speak, and I will unmute them?
You know, sometimes we've had folks speak, you know, in the public comments.
You have one, give me just a second.
Okay.
I'm unmuted, Lynn, should I start?
Yep.
Okay, I was waiting for someone to call on me.
Yep, just your name and then your address.
Hi, this is Larry Starr at Eighty-One Williamsburg Drive in Long Meadow. I just wanted to talk to the issue of commercial versus residential. I've got both, I've got a number of commercial buildings that I'm involved in. And we have just not seen the increase in value that that our residential items have gone up. So, you know, I I agree with Mark that the valuation of our commercial property should be, and in quotes, correct. But remember, all valuations are estimates at best. And I think it's fair to say that right now, real estate is much hotter. Residential real estate is a much hotter property than commercial. There's plenty of empty commercial around, there's not plenty of empty residential around. So it makes sense, and of course, this year is not the time to to agree with with what Tom said. It's not the time to be increasing taxes, to to change the split to affect the commercial side. But certainly, if there's a concern that the valuations aren't appropriate, that's an entirely different issue and should be, you know, looked at to make sure that evaluations are appropriate. But it sounds like we're doing that, but that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Any other speakers then that you know of?
Uh, no, no one else has expressed an interest in speaking.
Okay, so so I guess I would be looking for a motion to accept either one of these tax formulas?
I I would move to accept a single tax rate for fiscal two thousand twenty-one, is that the year we're talking about?
Yes, that sounds correct. And do we have a second on that? All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Um, this is Mark, I have other comments. Like I said, I, eleven years in a row, I voted for a split tax rate. I understand the issues this year, and I'm deciding whether or not I should vote one way or the other this year. But I do want to say, give people a story, because I think it's important that this become public. So it doesn't happen again, because ten years ago, we were told the reason that commercial rates are where they are is because, and Jessica, you heard this, and you're right, it was told us last year by the consultant that because there are no commercial property sales in Long Meadow, they base it on on rental and lease income. So it's a leased income basis. And so several years ago, I read in the paper that the Shell gas station, it was a Shell gas station at the time, which was on the intersection of Dwight, White Road and, excuse me, Williams and Bliss, was sold to the Big Y. And I immediately sent a note to our Principal Assessor at that time, saying, now you got it, and it was a very high sale price in the paper. And I said, now you got a sale, I expect things to change. Somehow, word got back to the Big Y, and if it sounds like I'm accusing somebody, it is because I am. That, and and the next week, there was a notice that the Big Y backed out of the sale and they signed a ninety-nine year lease, so there was never a sale in Long Meadow. So the fact is, there are no sales in Long Meadow, and that shouldn't stop us from properly evaluating commercial properties in Long Meadow. I'd like to see us go back and take a good look at commercial properties over the last ten or fifteen years. I truly believe that they lag the residential properties in value. And Larry, I'm sure you're right, twenty twenty has been a tough year for commercial properties. But, you know, from the period from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty shouldn't reflect what's going on over a single year. And, you know, we've had, we we had a split tax rate one year, and all the all the lease lessors came in and said, yeah, but, you know, the landlord just passes those increases along to us, and we're locals' moms and pops' stores, and we can't afford it. And I understand that, but the issue is one of equity and equity for our residents who seem to be taking the burden of taxes, and more importantly, the burden of our values. So I I'm, my only comment here is, I want to make sure that we're getting properly valued commercial properties, because we have not, in my opinion, not had that for the last ten years. commercial properties because we have not, in my opinion, not had that for the last ten years. And I'd like to see that start happening.
Okay, any other comments on the motion? I guess I'd like to say that, you know, again, we're talking about six percent of the uh the property in Long Meadow. Um, I don't know if it's, you know, in terms of how much how much those properties value overall, but um, yeah, I mean, it's just like a a good goal for the future to try to make sure that we can address that. Any other comments on the motion? All right, uh Deb will recall for a vote if you can do a roll call. For single payer tax. Single or s- single rate.
Okay, here I am, Tom. I was muted.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange? Mark Strange?
He's muted.
Steve?
Yes, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good discussion. Uh, thanks for the presentation. Um, that was really handy. And um so now we move to select board comments. Do we have any comments that people want to make? Okay, hearing none. We can move to the town manager's report.
Okay, thank you. On on November twenty first, we held a mask giveaway at Long Meadow High School. Thanks to the help of the select board, Fire Chief Dearborn, Police Chief Stocks, the COVID nineteen compliance officer and the COVID nineteen public health coordinator, members of Long Meadow Fire and Long Meadow Police, we handed out over a thousand masks along with uh safe gathering tips for Thanksgiving and information to sign up for Code Red, the emergency alerting system. Masks are still available for any town resident who needs them. You can stop by the fire station lobby to pick them up while supplies last. The FY twenty-two budget instructions were distributed to department heads and preliminary budgets are due back from departments on December sixteenth to begin the uh uh meeting process with departments to craft the budget recommendations for FY twenty-two. The FY twenty-two capital improvement plan was submitted to the capital planning committee. They will be meeting to review project requests and prepare recommendations. The two MIA safety grants or one grant we submitted for two projects, they I'm happy to say that they were approved. This was uh an award of eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars to cover the cost of a dash mounted camera for the police department and for a thermal imaging camera for the Department of Public Works to help detect heat loss. And I'm very happy to say that we were um awarded a meta grant, which is a municipal energy technical assistance grant to the from the Green Communities Division of Mass Department of Energy Resources. The application was submitted in August and we found out in October that we were awarded but we were embargoed from announcing it until uh D O E R made that announcement themselves. So we just got approval to announce this. It is for a high level business case for a complicated or I'm sorry, contemplated uh community shared solar project. This would be at the former DPW location as soon as it is vacated. Um, and this would uh provide the um conceptual plan for a solar array at the site. Um, this was a twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant and the work has already started. Running alongside this project will also be the need to continue the um plans to demolish the existing facility once um it's been vacated. And we'll want to get that moving along as quickly as possible so that we can take advantage of the federal tax incentives in calendar year twenty twenty-one because they're significantly higher than they will be in calendar year twenty twenty-two. And there'll be um much more on this project as we head into the new calendar year in January. And then just to briefly um touch on the public comment question about the spell tower. Um, yes, this was a uh a project that had started, I think, in twenty sixteen and really got um planning efforts done in twenty seventeen and then it kind of just sat there and um on the town's end, nothing really was happening. Um, we had reached out a couple of times to find out when they would be starting construction and um they pulled building permits in the last uh two months and they started work. Um, well, they started to mobilize at the site. They were at the planning board last week for an amended site plan for the fencing and a driveway um access area. And um they received approval for that and I expect that construction will commence very soon.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Uh, any questions from the board on the town manager's report? Mark Strange?
No questions.
Okay, Stephen Morantz?
No questions.
Richard Foster?
No questions.
Mark Gold?
No question.
Okay, the only thing I have is that when we when we gave out the masks, uh there were also some boy scouts who were there helping us out. I believe one of them was uh Chief Dearborn's son and and they were wearing short sleeves, which I was pretty impressed by. Uh, the other thing is when we look at the the solar farm in the DPW, um, there is a historic building on the site. It was a former train uh depot, I guess, at one point. And so when we talk about destruction, there was one, uh, there were going to be some folks looking at that as a historic building and what could be done with it. Is there any news on that, Lynn? Have you heard anything about that?
Um, I had heard that the Emirates Railway Society was interested in relocating that building to the Biggie Fairgrounds and um that unfortunately doesn't seem to be something that will work out. But other than that, I had not heard of any other prospects in that building at this point.
Because I know at one point with all the work that's being being done to uh with the Silvio Conte, um you know, uh wildlife area, that they might be interested in using that building, but we haven't heard anything on that either.
No, I have not.
Yeah. Um, all right, well, it's something that the uh our historic commission could, you know, look into it, I guess. And see, all right. Um, okay, so I guess then we can move into our our old business. We have um meeting minutes um from eleven sixteen and eleven twenty-three. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
Okay, and second?
Move the November fifteenth.
Second.
Okay, we're second on that. All right, I I think we may have to one at a time. So we'll start with eleven sixteen. Um, all those in favor, Deb, we do roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and now for eleven twenty-three?
I'll move, we approve the minutes to eleven twenty-three, regular select board, special select board.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, um, roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Hey, uh, now we have some appointments to make uh to the Housing Authority, the Audit Committee and the Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, so for the uh Audit Committee, we have Andre Greco. Um, and we can vote, we have a motion to uh put him on the committee.
I'll move, we approve Andre Greco to appoint Andre Greco to Audit Committee for a three-year term expiring June twenty twenty-two.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Deb, we do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and how about a motion for the Parks and Recreation Commission, um Andre Greco?
I'll move, we appoint Andre Greco to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring June twenty twenty-three.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Deb, we take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and we have uh one space on the Housing Authority and we have two candidates. Uh, Shawna Gatawski and Aaron Kobler. Do we have a motion to appoint one of them?
Yeah, Tom, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Aaron Kobler to a uh the fill the vacancy on the Housing Committee until the annual town election in June of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion on that?
Yeah, because there are two, I'd like to just comment that the reason I nominated Aaron Kobler over Shawna Gatawski, they're both w- well qualified individuals. But I think at this point, what we're lacking on that committee is somebody who's connected to the elder community and and Aaron clearly is. I think we've got, uh, you know, realtors and people who know the housing industry pretty well. So it's not necessarily their individual qualifications. I'm doing this based on trying to round out that committee, giving them some uh in background that they don't otherwise have.
Okay, any other comments or discussion before the vote? Okay, Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. Congratulations. Um, the next thing would be a discussion on a vote um to reduce the town meeting quorum uh pursuant to section seven, chapter ninety-two, Acts of twenty twenty. Um, and so I will let Lynn or Rebecca is here. Um, perhaps you want to make comments about uh why you feel this is the best course of action?
Thank you, Tom. Uh, yes, as I had mentioned at the special select board meeting, um, we are all interested in making sure that public health and safety is protected. And in previous declarations of recess and continuance, I had noted that I did not anticipate having a special town meeting while COVID was a a severe ongoing threat, certainly not while it we were in the yellow or or approaching red. And so because of the uh surprise technicality that we did not know about, um, the modification was made to allow for the special town meeting to go forward under the conditions that as we follow the Mass Department of Public Health's recommendation, which strongly recommends reduction in quorums for towns that have to have a town meeting. Um, with that that important reduction, we would be able to bring people together for the very sole purpose or the for the sole purpose of dismissing these articles, taking no action on them and then dissolving the meeting. It's important to note that the Finance Committee uh was briefed on this plan and they unanimously supported this plan. Additionally, it's vital to mention that the Planning Board had moved its hearing so they they continued their hearing. And under Mass general law, what this means is that I would not be permitted to take any affirmative motion uh on the table. So I would rule any motion to take something under consideration on those those uh issues and I would rule it out of order. So there would not be any motions, no discussion of any of those zoning articles. Um, and so given the fact that there will be really nothing to discuss and this meeting should be quick as to uh allow for the public to um for the for the um town meeting to be dissolved, then the Department of Revenue can certify our tax rate. So it's for all of those reasons that I support your reduction in the quorum.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Yeah, I uh agree that, you know, the town um is the legislative body and they want to vote on any issues that are going to be um decided on. And this is not a meeting about deciding any issues. It's really about just resolving this so we can set our test rate. Um, so are there any other questions for Rebecca from the board?
Um, Gold, I have a question.
Right.
Actually, we prevent whoever gathers there from voting on articles that they want if they choose to vote on it. We can prevent them from voting on anything that required a planning committee hearing. I heard you say that. But we, you know, can we prevent them from? Can you actually stop the vote from, any votes from happening?
Uh, I guess I don't fully understand what you're getting at. One of the
Well, if we lower the quorum to five and nine people show up and those nine people say, we want to vote on, you know, article nine, ten, eleven, you know, paying past bills or whatever it is. And
No, this is a legal meeting, but one of the things that I'm looking for is leadership from the select board to encourage that this is not a meeting where people really uh expect to have a fair shot at these um a a fair shot at a full discussion because COVID is preventing people from coming to the meeting. So I would I would hope that the select board would want to make sure they encourage people uh to preserve public health and safety and know that, you know, the motions to take no action are going to be the ones that are uh coming forward and be the the ones that are going to be voted on, I imagine, first.
Okay, any other questions from members of the select board? All right, well, I would like to put forward this motion. I move pursuant to section seven of chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty twenty, that the town of Long Meadow, in consultation with and with the approval of the town moderator, reduce the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum at the December ninth, twenty twenty special town meeting held during the governor's March tenth, twenty twenty declaration of a state of emergency. The reduction in quorum shall be to five registered voters, ten percent of the number that would otherwise be required. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, any further discussion on this motion? Mark Gold? Oh, well, Steve, please.
Uh, Mark, yeah. Uh, my comment would be that I believe that the residents of Long Meadow uh would understand that this is, this is a stopgap measure to take any discussion about what these issues are. Uh, from what we've heard from uh Paul Pesterzak and town manager that by postponing these issues, it's not going to affect the town operation until we have the spring town meeting. And so this is really, you know, nothing's being, nothing's being uh done uh underhanded, you know, this is, this is above board. We just need to do this so we can set our tax rate. And I hope that the residents of Long Meadow understand that and whatever issues they may have, it certainly can be and should be taken up. It certainly can be. Uh, so I think this is the appropriate step for us to take so we can set our tax rate, get our tax bills out and really then, you know, function financially as a community as we're supposed to.
Okay, uh, and Mark, did you want to make comments?
Yeah, my my concern is that we're disenfranchising people in town of Long Meadow by setting up a situation where potentially five people can run the whole town. And I'm concerned about that and I understand what we'd like to do, but you can't call a town meeting and say, but we don't want anybody to show up. And that's the implication here. And I don't think that that that's the right thing to do. So I'm you know, I I've agonized over this one because I understand we need to set the tax rate. We need to hold the town meeting. I just can't vote for disenfranchising people in town.
Okay, any other comments uh from board members? Okay, I I just hope that um, you know, as, you know, the we know that the select board will be there, you know, to that the five of us will be there. We're all we know that the Select Board will be there, you know, that the five of us will be there, and we're all uh voted in, and um you know, and we will be held accountable. You know, if we voted on something that should have come before the town uh and and made a vote on it, that, you know, that would we, I'm sure that the total Select Board would be replaced. We've seen, we've seen votes that the town didn't agree with happen on other committees, and uh all those votes were replaced, so I I know we're not immune to that. So I have no fear moving forward on this. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we can call for a roll call vote. So Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
I'm Steve.
Richard?
Present.
Okay, so the motion passes, um, and we will have our town meeting um on uh December ninth, so, okay. The uh next thing would be to uh to look at the irrigation meter discussion uh that was started a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we did receive some more information. We also have um Mario Maza and Pete Thurgur here. Um, and so I don't know, you know, this was brought to our attention by residents. I thought it was something we've talked about in the past. Um, so I don't know where, I know Mark, you had sent uh some information, and Richard is also very invested in this uh discussion. So who wants to start?
Um, if I could, Mark Gold, so what I sent out was an analysis I did based on data that actually that the DPW sent Mr. Foster, and I took it on, and I looked at all fifty-four hundred plus uh bills in the, or usages in the town of Long Meadow, and the, hopefully it's fairly self-explanatory, but I looked at 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 four scenarios in addition to the current billing. What I did is for each one of those, I looked at how would the 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 decision impact those people in five percent increments? So there's twenty increments of the top five percent users, the second five percent users, all the way down to the bottom five percent users. And what that would do to their overall bill, and I I guess I got to start out by saying the data was very challenging. Uh, there are a lot of people whose data wasn't clean, and I'm, maybe that was me as much as anything else, but we're still looking at some of that. But, you know, my, I also have this opinion that people who are paying for large amounts of water and irrigation are paying for sewer that they're not using, because that water isn't going down the sewer. And so I think the summary is in very short, is that, you know, if five percent of the top water users put in secondary irrigation meters, you know, it would raise the average bill for uh uh, you know, other residential people, it it would raise it just a couple of bucks, okay? Uh, it would range from no ch- no change to fifteen dollars increase. Obviously, the people who would save would be the people who put in the meters. That all goes all the way up to, you know, the I use the top five percent, the top ten percent, the top twenty percent, twenty-five percent users put in those irrigation meters, and so the the data really shows what the impact of that would be on the, if you will, the people who didn't put in those meters. Interestingly enough, that if you're one of the top ten percent users or top five percent users, and you put in a meter, those people just below you, you know, end up uh, you know, paying what they're paying now because we keep that two-hundred-and-twenty unit cap. The issue then comes with the fourth scenario I had, which is the winter metering system or winter averaging system. And it's interesting that if you use, go to winter averaging, the presumption I made is that if you went to winter averaging, there'd be no cap on usage. You just take your winter average, and that would be your cap. And if you went to that, there's some people who would, appears to me, whose sewer bill would go up twenty-four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Uh, pretty, pretty darn high, because they have high water usage throughout the year, and they just happened to cap it pretty early, and so the bottom line is that the maximum savings for people who put in a w- water meter is somewhere around five-hundred uh well, I put five-hundred-eighty-five dollars, but they won't, it won't go to zero, so it's somewhere around five-hundred bucks is their maximum savings. But for, you know, with reasonable expectations, the maximum increase for people whose whose bill would go up is 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 only fifteen bucks, you know, so and and because it's more equitable, I think it's it's a reasonable system to expect all all costs are borne by people putting this in. I got to tell you, if I, and I don't have an irrigation system in my house, but if I did, I'd have to think long and hard. I think we got an average price of eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars to put in a secondary meter in an irrigation system, so it has a maybe a three-year payback or something like that, but you know, it might be something people want to do, so I'd support it, and I'd use this, you know, forward this data as a means of of indicating it's not overly burdensome on those people left behind, and it is equitable. I'll be glad to answer any questions, because I know there's, went through a lot of data that I threw out there, but I tried to put together these scenarios to show what would happen if these people put in secondary irrigation.
Okay, uh, thank you. I don't know if, uh, Richard Foster, if you wanted to comment on the the numbers with the winter averaging. I know you've looked at this quite a bit, and I don't know if you had questions about the numbers, if you had comments?
No, I don't, Tom. Uh, Mark, Mark has taken a, I I think, a very narrow view at at the subject. It's a very large subject. I've talked to Lynn and talked to uh Pete. I think the only way the issue is ever going to be totally resolved is is to put it off to a task force so they can sit and look at everything. Uh, Mark's assumption that rates wouldn't be changed if uh, that that assumption is incorrect, because if if everybody that can put a meter in puts a meter in, that is going to affect the price of sewage on everybody in our community. Uh, looking at the database is almost fascinating because we've got one customer that uses over eight-hundred units a year in water. And yet, when we look at it, they're spread almost evenly for every single month. So that person which, and I'll I'll put out some paperwork tomorrow, the next day I'm working on, sorry, I couldn't get to you earlier. Uh, that particular case, that person that actually is walking away without paying for about five-hundred units of sewage each year. Uh, and there's no doubt about it, when you look at the records, that that they're just even flow all the way across. It's either that or they've got a hose running in their backyard. Uh, there's several cases in there that, you know, almost, almost you need to go line by line. I talked with Mark about that. There's some really strange usage patterns. Uh, and there's some very, very, very clear usage patterns on winter, winter averaging. Uh, the information I put out tomorrow or or the next day, we'll, I'll show some charts on there and some graphs where you can see this. Uh, it doesn't apply uniformly to the entire database. Uh, I don't have all the stats in front of me, but you'll see them when you get them. Uh, it's kind of amazing. It's only about uh maybe a third of the people that could benefit by putting these, putting these meters in or or doing winter averaging. The reason that I'm a little skeptical on the the meter installations is that, in fact, it does cost over eight-hundred dollars. Uh, you'll see in the graphs that I send you, there there's very payback from two-point-three years up to about two-hundred-and-fifty years. Uh, because some people will only save fifty cents under the winter averaging or if you put the meter in. The reason I say winter averaging, and I think everybody should understand, it's a concept that's used across America for determining sewage flow. Since we have no way of determining sewage flow, we are guessing at how much sewage, except for what we meter and it goes to Springfield. So they figure that during the winter months, the water that you use normally is your normal sewage flow for the entire year. Because our habits don't change that much. Now, somebody will tell you, I take more showers in the summer. Great. One unit of water is seven-hundred-and-thirty, or seven-hundred-and-forty-eight gallons, and an average shower is seventeen gallons. You do the math. I mean, it 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 sounds fantastic, but in reality, it doesn't mean anything. Uh, we'd have blisters on our body for taking that many showers, and that's just one unit of water. So I I, you know, and I and I applaud Mark. I've read his information. I know where he's coming from, and and I'll put mine out in a couple of days. We're both, we're both chasing the same rabbit around the ring. And both of our scenarios do boil down to about the same point. It's our approach to getting there. I I choose not to burden people to put more money into a system to do something that we can do to every single user in our town by the flick of a switch and the change of a computer program. And and Tom, I'll leave it there, because I I'm going to put out more information, but I I would urge everybody that, and I've talked to Lynn, we do need to get like, get task force going this 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 winter or after January, so so we can all sit in a room and talk through the several scenarios that is nested within this. Uh, this is one indication where I'm really surprised. It it's not one fix-all. There's so many cases that need to be looked at individually. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you, Richard, and Mark.
Uh, Tom, can I just make one quick comment to respond?
Uh, I think we're going to have a discussion at the end of this, after, you know, everyone's had a chance to talk. Uh, and what I'd like to do is is ask Mario Maza and Pete Thurgur. I don't know which one of you would want to make comments first, and then we'll have an open discussion afterwards. So just make a a note of what you're going to ask about. Uh, do we have Mario here?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, Tom.
Yes.
So the way I look at it is, we got, we got four options. Probably the least popular is do nothing. The current system works as it is. We talked about the meters. That's option two. Option three is winter averaging. Then option four is consider lowering our cutoff limit. We've talked a little bit about it at the last um go-round of this, which was probably about two years ago. And there might be um some more equity that could be had if we take the current two-twenty uh limit and lower it to some lower amount, and we can have an analysis done. If we're going to look at metering and winter averaging, why not throw that in the mix and see if that makes some sense? We have a system that works now. It's just a matter of switching over to a different amount.
That sounds great. And in our previous discussions, is this something that you've put forward in the past?
We looked at it, um, so we talked about it, but we really had no action because every one of these results in the sewer rate going up, and at the time, the board decided they wanted to keep everything as it was.
Okay, great. And uh, any comments from Pete Thurgur on um the discussion?
Yeah, basically, you know, since I've been here, we've talked about this before, um, scenarios about earthquake in two thousand and seven.
Uh, your your voice is kind of moderating. Maybe you get a little closer to your microphone. Thank you.
Got better?
That's good.
Okay, yeah, uh, earthquake in two thousand and twenty.
I think as you turn away, as Pete, as you turn away, I think you you're losing something, see?
Yeah, actually, I'm on two screens on the laptop I got here, that's what I'm using for my speaker, that's what I'm speaking into. Are you not hearing me?
Uh, we can't hear very well. I don't know if someone else is uh using your internet server. Sometimes that can block things a little bit. Um, or turn your volume up?
Yeah, it's on. Hold on. That any better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, new, new laptop. So yeah, so talking again, like, if you had a discussion back two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Still nothing?
Yeah, you keep falling off the wagon. I think you're going to have to, like, put, almost kiss the screen, Pete, uh.
Holy.
Don't be so shy.
I'm into it now.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it's something I don't think it's
All right. All right, well, it's it's, um, I I did have a good question for you, too. I wanted to ask you about um meter longevity, because that was an issue that came up um in a prior discussion. A lot of the water meters wear out, and is there any way to predict that or?
Uh, I, I, you got that, Pete?
Yeah, but they can't hear me.
Type it in, type it in the thing if you can, in the um chat box.
The chat box, okay.
Tom, I had talked with Pete on this, too, and he can nod his head. I believe he said that their new warranties are like ten to twenty years on these meters on accuracy. Uh, they will slowly fail over time, but they they apparently the new ones have got a much better accuracy and longevity than the older meters. I think Pete was shaking his head yes there when we looked at him, and now there's his head again. Is that right, Pete?
Twenty.
Yeah, so it's it's twenty years.
Twenty years. And warranties up before twenty years. Okay, great. Um, okay, and um, you know, I I guess we will move to some questions. Um, you know, we haven't heard anything from Mark Strange. If you'd like to have, you have any questions or comments or?
Um, so, um, because I I'm not quite sure where we are. So, you know, we've heard from Mark, we've heard from Richard, and and Mario and Pete. I'm not quite sure. There's a lot of stuff floating around, so even if I were to answer, ask a question, I'm not quite sure. Um, and what the the exact context is.
Okay, great. Uh, Steve Morantz, did you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, because I'm not sure what's going to happen next, and so I, you know, I I'm not sure I can add anything constructive at this point of view. I assume, you know, I know Richard wants to have a task force, I'm I know what Mark wants to have meter. I think he wants to have meters put in if they want to do it, but I'm not sure where we're, I'm I'm with Mark Strange in this one. I'm not sure where we're at and what, if anything, we're doing at this point in time.
All right, well, um, and Mark Gold, did you have another comment that you wanted to make now?
Yeah, I just wanted to correct or or address a comment Richard said that, just so everybody's clear, in the report I did, I assumed consistent revenue from the sewer uh from our sewer rates. So that if the, you know, if if certain people put in meters and sewer usage went down, the rate would go up. So, Richard, I did not assume a and I thought you alluded to the fact that I assumed a a consistent rate. I didn't, and in fact, it shows that what the, how the rates would slightly go up, which is why people who don't put in a meter would end up paying more. So, you know, I'm working on consistent revenue for the the town, which I think what Mario spoke about also, is we need to assure the revenue for our sewer uh, you know, our our sewer uh bill, you know, accounts.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one comment, Tom. That that's good, Mark. I I, you're right, I missed that point, because I I'm also with the consistent uh uh revenue coming into town, and I went to the worst-case scenario. I went ahead and converted everybody and looked at the worst-case scenario. Um, the other thing, Tom, that that keeps coming back, and I have Pete, I talked with Pete about this today. This sewage rate limit, uh, it's hard to tell where it ever came from. It's hard to tell why it's there. Uh, it it is, it is very, very, very much in the favor of extremely heavy users, but not in the favor of low users. I I think when you start to see some of the stats that I put out, you'll see just how many people are paying for sewage that they likely are not nor will they ever be using as far as sewage. Uh, there are some customers that are using that, the the above the two-twenty limit. There's, I forget how many there are, but there's several of them above it. But even in that, when you look at the year-long averages, you can see some of them that obviously are using a lot more water and sewage than two-twenty. And we don't know where it's going. You know, Pete and I talked today. It's hard to tell. He even looked at a couple of cases. There's some people that are using like eighty, ninety units a month, if you can imagine that. Uh, the one person was over eight-hundred units a year. I mean, that's you you know, in a in total spectrum, that's like five, ten times what a lot of people are using. So then there's some exceptional water users. And and they are, they are immensely uh benefiting, in some cases, by this two-twenty cap. I mean, it's amazing to see how much they're not paying in sewage, and although it it looks from the records that there's, they may actually be putting it into the sewers. Uh, that information will come out. That's what I'm saying. The uh, and I understand um Steve Morantz and and uh and and Mark, because Mark Strange, because Mark Gold and I have been, we've bathed in this data for the last three or four weeks. I mean, we're we're deep. I've worked on it for like two or three days solid now. And and the more you work on it, the more that you reveal uh on question marks on And, and the more you work on it, the more that you reveal, uh, on question marks on, on why we're doing it. And that's why, that why I recommended it. Just go off and get the DPW in there and get Mario in there and Mark in there and myself in there. And anybody that wants to, and really sit and talk about this issue in great detail. And see if we can set the direction for our community for, you know, foreseeable future. Uh, I agree with what Mario was talking about, uh, you know, on, on the rate adjustment. I also, you know, at the one point we had tiered rates in town. I mean, when you look at the data, there's certainly some customers that almost beg to have tiered rates. I mean, you would be shocked how many people are using over three and four and five and six hundred units of water in our community. Uh, and, and, and we know there's no way that people have that many kids and they're bathing them. I mean, that's irrigation water. I mean, it has to be going to irrigation or it's a leak or something bizarre is happening. So, uh, uh, there's a lot more to be uncovered on this, but, uh, you know, and I, and as I say, Mark's, Mark, it sounds like Mark and I may be sparring back and forth, but we're not. Our interest is one hundred percent in line. We both want the same goal. We're just not quite sure how to achieve it. Thank you.
I agree with Richard.
Yeah, all right, good, good. And, uh, you know, and again, our constituents, people listening, you know, need to be aware that we're, uh, trying to make sure that the town is treated fairly in this. So what is our next step? I know we're, we wouldn't make any decisions tonight. It sounds there's more stuff to be processed. Um, you know, do we want to look at a task force? I mean, we've never had a task force on this in the past, have we?
Yeah, there was, there was a task force. It was mostly on water rates, but part of the problem is that, that was the task force that got referenced many, many times with, with improper, incorrect or variable data that said things like, oh, they're going to raise our water rates or tax rates or sewer rates to ridiculous levels. And that's part of the problem of, of the task force is people read the wrong things into it and sometimes. My opinion, I think that, you know, one of the issues is I think we need to decide what is intent here? Is our intent to, you know, be more equitable and get people to, you know, pay for the sewer that they use and not pay for the sewers they don't use? Or is our intent to just cover the bills because we're doing that now? You know, and, but as Richard said, it's clearly not equitable. I mean, and he was throwing out numbers, but not giving people a reference point. Most town use between five and fifteen units of water per month. And then there are the houses that are using fifty a month, you know? And the houses that use five to fifteen per month, in the summertime, maybe they'll go up to thirty or forty or fifty, something like that. But that's for the two or three months during the summer. So, I mean, the data is amazing when you look at the individual numbers. And so I, like anything else, it has to decide, you know, what's our intent here? Is it to just collect money and, you know, some people win, some people lose? Or is it to try to be equitable to as many people as possible? Or is it to just try to only pay for what we're really doing, you know? Get those people to pay for sewers what sewers really cost us? Because if we do that, it'd be a whole different answer.
Okay. And, and one of the issues that has not come up in this discussion is water preservation. And I, I know that there's probably some other boards on, members of the board who are interested in that. And where does that fit into this formula?
Not at all, because it's not have anything to do with the water. We're not changing people's water usage. Policies to change water uses. We're just talking about the sewer. And that's why the, you know, right now, sewer rate is two dollars and sixty-six cents. If you use the maximum of two, two hundred and twenty units a year, and then you cap out, that's five hundred and, what is it? Five hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty, twenty cents. That's all we're talking about. So people said, gee, I got a water bill that was three thousand dollars. The maximum sewer bill they got was five hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty cents, no matter what they were using. So if we're going to have a discussion about water, Tom, you know, that's going to just, you know, add another complexity onto this, this, our, this discussion. And I'm not saying it's bad to do that, but I think we have that, that discussion separately from a discussion about, uh, uh, about sewer and sewer charges.
Well, I guess I would probably agree with you, except the fact that, um, the charges might be related to how much water. People may use more water if they, if we lowered the threshold, uh, amount they had to pay for, for water. But I guess a house can only use so much water. And like Richard was saying, you know, that maybe irrelevant, you know, in, in some ways.
And you're still paying for the water. You know, you can say, oh, the sewer rate went down, so I'm going to water my lawn more. You're still paying for the water to water your lawn. You know, you're just paying, not paying for it. So I just think we need to decouple the water discussion from the sewer discussion. And that's one of the issues that we had with, with, you know, the, when, when we had that, uh, ear- earlier study from, uh, uh, the Earth Tech Report, and we've had some other things. They, they talked so much about water that the sewer got lost in there. And yet the citizen petition we were presented only talked about sewers. And so that was my intent to only talk about sewers.
Tom, there are no incentives in the current system to conserve water. There, there is absolutely nothing. Uh, you, you actually, you, you, you could say with the sewage cap in place encourages indulgence. Because people know once they hit the two twenty, they're only going to pay water from there on out. Uh, they're not being hit. E- even if they're putting it into sewage, they're not being hit, Tom. That's the, that's the thing that starts to, to, to come out of those records to me is we, we obviously have people that are dis- discharging more than two twenty units into the sewage system and, and are not paying for it. Uh, but as I say, I, I would recommend, and not so much task force, I'd recommend, you know, I talked to Lynn. Let's turn it to the town manager. She's very much aware of what we're talking about. Uh, I think Lynn had, had told me that likely January or so, that she would have enough time off then to start to, to steer in and look at this because she, I think she's very interested in this subject matter also. Since her staff are going to be de- definitely deeply involved in this discussion. And we would be able to resolve the issue. I feel very comfortable we can resolve it. Uh, and as I say, Mark's right. It, it, there's two separate issues. There's the water side and there's a sewage side. And, and right now, uh, the one is being subsidized greatly by the other account.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Thank you for everyone. So, um, you know, Richard, you're going to give us some additional information to review for the select board. Um, and then, uh, Lynn, did you have any comments? Uh, as far as next steps, what you see with this issue?
Not, nothing more to add to, to the conversation tonight. Um, it's something I definitely want to look at. It's just a matter of having the time to, to delve into it and really understand what's happening here.
Okay.
Tom, can you guys?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now, Tom?
Yes.
I'm abroad. Oh, I'm on, on a cell phone now, cell phone now. So I gotta, thanks Lynn for getting me in. No, I just, what I was trying to state before is like these discussions I've had, since I've been here, I've had, you know, good talks with Mark and, you know, Richard on these, you know, different scenarios and what we're looking at. I, I think that the biggest thing for me, um, looking at it, um, I am not a fan of secondary meters. DEP is not a fan of secondary irrigation meters because they do not promote water conservation. And I've said this before in, in a couple of meetings. We are based, uh, residential gallon per capita. DEP sets standards for that. And our unaccounted water, which is ten percent or lower, residential gallon per capita is sixty-five gallons per person per day. The lowest that Long Meadow has been is ninety-five gallons. Um, matter of fact, last year when I did the ASR report for DEP, um, they responded back every year. They always respond after you pull, you do your full report. They responded back that they are looking at our numbers because we have been so high. Um, which it comes to the point where DEP can turn around. And regardless of a drought situation or not, to lower our numbers, they can mandate water restrictions on the town of Long Meadow because our numbers are so high. Um, so, you know, so for one, I've always felt like a secondary meter. Um, yes, the people do feel better because, you know, they, they're not paying for sewer. But that doesn't stop them from saying, okay, I'm not paying for sewer, so I'm going to water twice as much. Um, I've seen that scenario in other systems that I've run. Um, you know, like you said, the, the, the percentage, I mean, take East Long Meadow, they have over eight thousand residential, uh, meters right now. And they have about a thousand irrigation meters, uh, in their system out of their eight thousand residential customers. And that, their system has been in place for a while. Um, Agawam, those numbers are even lower, uh, for that. As a matter of fact, they don't even like to promote secondary meters in their system. Um, you know, having discussions with them also. Um, you know, I just feel that the, like Mark was saying, or, uh, Richard was saying before, I, I'm looking at some of these sewer cutoffs as high as three hundred, uh, you know, per fiscal year, going all the way down to a hundred and seventy just back in two thousand. Um, I think something can be regulated, probably better in those numbers. Uh, definitely a task force looking into it a little deeper. What I was trying to say before is in two thousand seven, when I started, Earth Tech did a, a water and sewer rate study. And the best thing they came up with was a tiered rate structure. Um, I feel almost like an ascending rate. Um, I, I feel if you look at other systems in, in Massachusetts, a lot of them do use that ascending rate for that to regulate not only the water, but also regulate the sewers where the sewer doesn't go out of hand. Um, but that's just a couple of, you know, a couple of options. And just a quick note to back, and the simple number that DPC, I think I sent that out to Lynn and Mark. You guys got that? That was more for, uh, uh, Mark Strange had asked, uh, just a simple, he wanted to know how many customers, uh, last year used over the two hundred and twenty unit limit. Um, so really on that number, the figures that I gave DPC at the time were, uh, fiscal year numbers and, uh, kind of not the calendar year. So the really, the only one really to look at for those billing periods was FY twenty, the first bill and FY twenty, the second bill, which actually would be totalize the two thousand nineteen calendar year usage. And there were six hundred and sixty customers that were over that two hundred and twenty mark. So, um, so about, you know, twelve percent of our customers. And I think Mark saw those, Mark's seen those numbers too. Um, as of right now, I've given them numbers all the way up to November of this year. So we've got just a couple of more months in the fiscal year billing when that goes out. And because of the drought season that we had, we're already at eleven hundred and twenty-eight residential customers that are already over the two hundred and twenty unit limit. And that may go up a little bit more. Like Richard was saying, there's customers in the wintertime. There's a, a few scenarios. There's some odd cases that they use that much water even during the winter. Um, just to look at some figures. They did throw a few numbers on there on table four on that chart. If you look, there are some adjusted sewer, uh, cap consumption numbers from two twenty going all the way down to a hundred and sixty. I think those were just numbers that were based on the nu- people that would be going over the two hundred and twenty. And that would be lost from the sewer revenue. I want to say even at a sewer cap of a hundred and sixty units per fiscal year, I think it totaled two point five percent of the total sewer revenue at about a little over fifty thousand dollars that would have to be made up with the sewer rate increasing. I mean, so I, so I think there's just, it just gives you some thought. There are other options, you know, out there to look at.
Thank you, Pete. I appreciate your assistance. I'm glad that we got, you know, you've been waiting all this time.
Yeah, I just, yeah, love technology.
Yeah, well, good. I'm glad you could join us. Uh, any questions for Pete Thurgur? I'll have to ask his sound. His voice working. I see. No question.
I, I have, yeah, it's not a question. It's, I have a, a follow-up about the, your follow-up, Tom, about water conservation, which I, I modestly disagree with Mark Gold about separating sewer usage from other water usage. I mean, water is water. And I just, I have to make this comment because it struck me today in the newspaper. I am, I deal with financial business. And today, for the first time, the Commodities Futures Exchange Commission, but water futures are now, are now a commodity. So you can speculate in water futures. This has to do with the fact that at least somebody out there has decided that water really is a precious commodity, like gold, where you can buy gold futures. So you now can buy water futures. I think this just as a statement about where we were going, about the, the significance of water in our lives. And I, I, I think conservation is really important. We are very fortunate that we have the water supply we have. But it's not necessarily immune to drought. And as, uh, Mr. Thurgur was saying, you know, we could be restricted whether, you know, whether it's affected, uh, the reservoir or not. So I, I think that water conservation cannot be excluded from the conversation. If the task force is going to, uh, deal with all those issues, the conservation aspect, um, really has to be a part of it. And this concept of water futures is part of the financial markets where you can now bet on, yeah, is there going to be a drought? So I'm going to, I think water futures are going to go up, or hey, we're going to have a rainy season, water futures go down. I mean, it's, it's, it's rather mind-boggling, um, uh, set of events that, you know, I, I, you know, believe that with climate changes, leaders too, is we really need to think about, you know, the fact that we have this freshwater system is a real gift to us. And I think we want to make sure, uh, we keep it. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments in regards to Pete Thurgur's? Um, I did have a, I, I guess, you know, when there is a drought, Pete, um, they just make recommendations for people to reduce watering and so forth. But there's nothing that's tied to meters. And so we wouldn't, um, be able to influence people's levels of watering in a drought, um, by, by meters or anything, right? Meters don't.
No, well, no, depending on the drought, you know, you have to understand too, that we're under Springfield, uh, Water and Sewer Commission. We're under their permit along with East Long Meadow, Agawam, Ludlow, um, and, uh, Wilberham. So what happens is the total amount of water that's consumed, um, of all those communities, there's a permit number that Springfield is allowed to draw from their reservoirs, from Cabo Mountain Reservoir. Um, so when it gets into drought conditions and they're going over those numbers, that's when Springfield gets forth through DEP, depending on the drought conditions. And then those, um, will come down to the consecutive systems. So like if, for instance, like you said, if there is a drought and it's to the point where, okay, now you have to do water bans, um, implement water bans. You, you as acting, the select board members as acting Water and Sewer Commissions, you are entitled to set those bans anytime you want, even though it may not come from Springfield. But if it comes, DEP tells Springfield that they have to, uh, conserve the water and put these bans in place, then all the consecutive towns have to do that also. Um, I think one of the things you might have seen this year, uh, just because of the revenue that Springfield was losing because of COVID, um, you know, they might have been borderline under those conditions. But, um, you know, they, they were losing a lot of revenue, uh, with a lot of businesses, industries closed during that COVID. And they weren't going to put those options in place for any type of water conservation, but, but we could still even know that we have to do our separate, you know, statistical reporting. Even at one point, DEP may turn around too and, and give us our own recommendations to say, you know, for water conservation or, you know, odd even watering, you know, nights and days, things like that, put restrictions on regardless too.
Okay, great. Thanks, Pete. Um, all right. So what's the next step? So if people, any, uh, any ideas of where we want to take this from here? Uh, there was mention of a task force. I have some people who would want to volunteer for that sort of thing.
Yeah, my, my recommendation, Tom, is that, uh, you know, we, we tip our hat to our town manager. Uh, and let her come back. And I think she's talking like in January, February, sometime in that time period. Uh, we should have enough time to, to get this issue resolved come spring meeting. I, I don't see any problems. And I guess I think there's a tremendous amount of information now that we've already worked out. And we got scenarios, uh, and, and, and I'd like to take just one second to comment. You know, at these type of meetings, it's awful easy to beat the messenger, to pound the messenger. And, and I'd like to thank Mark for the time that he's devoted towards this issue for our community. I know the hours and the days he's put in the database management and working up the reports that you guys are getting to where both of us are trying to, to bring this to format of everybody in the best possible way we can. So, uh, you know, I, I, I know it's easy to, to jump on people, but I want to, I want to thank Mark for the time he's put into it.
Thank you. Okay. We, if we were in a meeting in person, we might all stand up, give you a, an applaud, Mark. But, uh, yes, take what you can get. But, uh, all right. So then let's flat on that. Uh, Lynn, uh, you've been charged with looking at getting some stuff together in January. And, um, so that sounds good. You know, we'll, we'll keep moving this forward because. You know, we'll, we'll keep moving this forward because, you know, as the resident who came before us, uh, earlier in the, in the, in the year, said that, you know, uh, things always are changing and we should take a look at this again and, um, see if we need to put this before the town in some way. All right, so we'll close the discussion on this, we'll go to, to new business. And, uh, again, we have to approve the annual liquor license, um, re- you know, renewals every year. And in our prior meeting, uh, we decided that for folks who are gonna renew their liquor, liquor license, if they had, if they serve liquor on-site, so it's not liquor stores, but on-site, um, sales, that there would be a rebate, uh, of seven hundred dollars on the license. Um, and so I guess we'll move forward with that. And I guess we have quite a few people who are, uh, licenses ready, um, to be accepted, and I guess I will, uh, you know, we have a memo on this, but I'll ask, uh, our, our liquor license expert, uh, Deb House, to make some comments, uh, as far as where we, we look, like we're ready to renew all these licenses. Um, or should, or should we just renew a certain number of them, uh, what's the best thing to do?
Um, why don't you just go forward and renew them? There's only three that need contingent renewals because they're not done. But Debbie gave us so much data, I mean, she gave us all the charts and graphs and everything, they did. I, I'd, I'd like to make two motions, one is restaurants and a separate one is package stores, if you don't mind. I'm, I'm gonna move, we renew the license, the liquor license approvals of The Grapevine contingent upon their completion or submitting tips proof, Iron Chef, Lee Brothers, Long Meadow Country Club, Max Burger, Posto, The Kitchen, The Meeting House, Twin Hills Country Club, and then Ume Asian Bistro contingent upon their payment of back fees.
Okay, and do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call.
I, I, I do have a question.
Yes, Steve.
Of the, uh, Mark, uh, in terms of the, the two, uh, incident, the two, um, places that are in, that haven't met, um, the standard yet. It's contingent upon, so is there a, is there, do we have a timeframe on this, I mean?
Well, the, the licenses expire at the end of the year, so they gotta get them in before January first, or January first, they don't have a new license, Steve.
Okay.
All right, good question.
Maybe Debbie can, can confirm that, but that's how I read it.
Any comments, Deb?
She's probably muted.
She could be.
Okay, here I am.
All right.
I was muted. Um, everybody looks good except Ume, and it's just their back taxes. Um, it was worse, they paid some. They still have more to do, they know about it. I was told they would contact the collector's office, and I checked today and we're still waiting. Um, as far as, um, the tip certification, uh, the bottle shop and Grapevine, they never provide it. Um, it's not a requirement, it's more of a strong suggestion. Um, they have in the past supplied me with, uh, a letter or memo saying, yeah, we know about this, we've trained our staff, and we just don't wanna go to the cost of actually doing the tip certification. So I do have that on file. Um, but it's basically just Ume and the, um, the debt issue.
Okay, and have till, uh, January first to pay, or then otherwise the whole thing just, as Mark Gold said, it's just, um, they, they lose out? They need to pay this by the first, huh?
Right, everything needs to be done before I hand over a license, which is effective January first. Um, and we don't usually have any major issues. There's always a couple that, you know, give me the wrong insurance, or, or do you have some debt? But everything's usually cleared up. Um, so I just, um, you know, won't give them their license yet, and I, I'm pretty confident they'll clear this up. Seems like they just had kind of a lot, uh, this year. But if, if, if they don't, if they don't, uh, you know, have payment to me by the end of December, they don't have their new license, I'll just be holding it. And they can't operate actually without the new license.
Okay, and then, so if, you know, at a point in January where they meet all the requirements, it would just be released, we wouldn't have to take an additional vote, correct?
Right, I just hold the license until I have everything.
Okay, um, any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the table, um, it's been seconded. Uh, Deb, do you wanna take a roll call vote?
Mm-hmm, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Mark, did you wanna say, can you take a second motion for?
Yeah, for the package, move, we renew the license, the liquor license for Long Meadow Package Store, for the bottle shop contingent upon tip certification, Delaney's Market, and Four Seasons Wines and Liquors.
Okay, and we have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that? Okay, let's call for a vote, uh, Deb, will you, you roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, and the, uh, last item on there is the, uh, discussion of the town wireless system, a wireless internet system. Um, and, you know, some of the towns around us are looking in this, I know that East Long Meadow's looking into this. Uh, and Mark Gold brought this, you know, the agenda, um, so I will let him, uh, you know, start, uh, you know, explaining why he wanted us to discuss this tonight.
I, I just think that, you know, twenty-first century towns ought to consider something beside wire-to-wire Comcast or internet-based, based wireless systems. And, and I think in our early discussions, either early this year or late last year, we talked to our cable advisory committee, who, for the most part, are prewell-versed on this. And I'd love to s- charge them with coming up with a recommendation for the select warden for the town on the implementation of an alternative to, to probably wireless, uh, internet system. My goal would be to have it be, uh, an alternate revenue source for the town, but I don't think I'd put that constraint on it for the, for, for this group. Let them come, come back with what they're recommending. But clearly if it's, you know, if the town's gotta pay for it, it's gonna be a cost to provide free wireless, it's far less likely to, to go forward than if it was some system that, you know, town residents could have an alternative to their wired internet system and they'd save some money in the town and make a few bucks. So my goal here was to have the select board just say, yep, let's send this over to the, our cable advisory committee and see what they come up with for a recommendation.
Okay, good. Any other comments from select board members about the issue of wireless? I don't know if you've thought about it before, or, um?
No, I, I have, Tom, I think it's time. Uh, Mark, isn't, uh, West Springfield, or isn't Springfield also considering right now?
You know, I don't know, I know that there was a, something that West Springfield has done it, and clearly in the North Valley, you know, Amherst, Northampton, they've, they've got it, but, uh, I, I just don't know what Springfield's looking at, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, it seemed like I just read something that they're, they're starting to look at the system also. No, I, I, Tom, I think it's timely, I know Mark's mentioned it two or three times, but i- i- it, I, I think it's time we tiptoe into the twenty-first century.
Okay, great. You know, you know, it's something we've talked about over the years, I know this isn't the first time we've discussed this. Uh, you know, Stephen Crane had brought this up several times, and I think we discussed it when we talked about the new, uh, the tower that's gonna go up by the tennis courts, you know, that maybe that would be something that we could put on that. Uh, but I don't know the details about any of that, how a wireless system would work, but I do know that, uh, one of the things that happens is when people are traveling especially, um, one of the things like in Europe, people will look for McDonald's because they know, they go to McDonald's, they're gonna get wireless, and they can find out what's going on and make hotel reservations and do all those sorts of things. And, and I really do think it would be great if Long Meadow could be a community where people could come here and just say, oh, you know, there's, there's wireless, and this is great, and hopefully it'll encourage them to, uh, you know, use our, our restaurants and everything else here, our services. But, um, and I think it's a great idea, I think it's a really good idea. And i- if we could generate some revenue, we're always talking about other ways, other revenue streams, um, that we could utilize, and this would be like a utility in a sense. And perhaps we could get the town to, to support something like that, you know? So, I don't, any other comments or questions on this?
Yeah, Tom, are you proposing we put a McDonald's in town?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying this could avoid the McDonald's. If people would know, they wouldn't need to go to McDonald's to get wireless.
I, I just thought I'd clarify the record before the phones start ringing.
Yes, no, thank you.
Tom, do we need a motion to direct something to the cable advisory committee, or is that something we can just do?
I, I think we can make a, uh, well, I think we can make a directive without it being a motion. Um, the question is who's gonna deliver it, um, so they know. Uh, should we ask the town manager to check in with them?
Sure.
All right. So Lynn, that would, in case you didn't have enough things to do, I apologize, but, um, if you could just send them an, an email, and if they have any further questions, um, you know, they can contact Mark Gold. But, uh, yeah, that sounds great.
Do you have any timeframe on that, or are you somewhat open-ended? Because I know they're in the middle of, uh, renewing a cable license right now.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, they ought to have a recommendation for us.
Okay.
Yeah, or at least a, a, a status report on, on, you know, what kind of research they would need to do, um, before they could give us a, uh, a well, you know, well-thought-out proposal. Um, so, all right. And, uh, and if they have trouble celebrating their Christmas holidays and New Year's holidays, again, they can call Mark Gold and discuss something else. No, um, all right. We, uh, seem to have come to the end of our, our meeting. Um, but thanks, uh, for all the participants, um, and for those of you who are, are watching this. And we will, uh, you know, meet again because we, we, we can't, uh, go too long. And our next meeting is December twenty-first. I'd like to look for a move, meeting, uh, motion to adjourn meetings.
So move.
Okay?
Second.
And seconded, uh, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you everyone and good evening.